No.
Oh, yeah, no introduction?
No introduction, I think. Oh. Let's go. Gray?
Here.
Jerem?
Here.
Melton?
Here.
Pauls?
Yeah.
Thompson?
Here.
Gurnat?
Glad to be here.
Mr. President.
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in the invocation by Councilmember Ben Gray.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear Lord, please guide our hands as we continue to do the city's work and we continue to be as good as we can possibly be in terms of representatives in our various communities and that we continue to move Omaha forward. Amen.
Before we get started, we wanted to have actually three points of personal privilege here. The first point of privilege I want to point out is our pleasure in having our colleague, Gary Gurnat, back with us today and back in the office. Our thoughts and prayers were with him all weekend long and he's doing well and back up to his old humor. We actually, I actually told him to take the day off because we have a fairly light day today and I want to make sure he comes back at full strength, but being a tough South Omaha boy, he declined and is here anyways. So with that, Gary, please take a moment for any remarks you may have.
Thank you, Mr. President. I cannot, last week, my whole life passed in front of me with this health crisis that I had. As I was arriving to do a public event down at Spring Lake Pool, and it had to do with the combined sewer overflow problem, and I guess they canceled it. So to the Public Works Department, I'm sorry the press conference went down the sewer because of me. But to my colleagues, to everyone out in Omaha that took time out of your day to send some get well wishes to me and your thoughts and your prayers, I truly appreciate all of them. It worked. I'm back at work. It feels good. Apologize for the voice, but the doctor said that it's going to be that way for a little while due to the trauma that I sustained. Life is very precious, but I can tell you one thing, folks, the emergency medical system in this city of Omaha really works. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Great to have you back. And we hope was an unrelated matter, our Chief of Staff, Warren Weaver, has also announced his retirement in the last week or so, and so we also wanted to have a minute to acknowledge him. Over 20 years of service to the City of Omaha as well as his military career, he's been a extremely effective public servant for the citizens of Omaha. He has vast knowledge of the city and will be missed greatly when he retires on July 19th. So thank you, Warren, for all you've done for the city as well.
Thank you.
And lastly, Mr. Thompson, you have a point of recognition as well.
Thank you, Mr. President. We wish to introduce Boy Scout Troop members from Troop Number Four, Twenty-Nine, and if we could have them stand, I believe the name is Evan Johnson and DJ Stender. Did I say that right? Okay, let's give them a hand. We appreciate young people wanting to know about civics. That's very impressive that you would want to know about what we do. So thank you and keep growing.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
City Clerk says publication in the Daily Record on June 14th, known as very pre-councilal regular City Council meeting, June 18th, 2013. A current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in white binder on the east wall of Legislative Chambers.
Welcome to the Omaha City Council. This meeting is conducted in public and by law may only address the topics listed on the published agenda. The council will hear testimony but will not engage in debate of issues with the public at this meeting. During testimony, it's not appropriate to applaud or convey disapproval. These actions only detract from the formal decorum of the meeting. So at this time, please turn off or mute any electronic devices.
Zoning ordinance and final rating and planning board attachments will take items five, six, seven, and eight as one case. Five is ordinance to rezone property located at 10425 Rainwood Road from AG to DR Development Reserve District. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Six is resolution, the preliminary plot entitled Frost Hilltop is hereby accepted. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Seven is the plat entitled Frost Hilltop is hereby approved. A Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. And eight is a subdivision agreement is hereby approved.
Public hearings on items five, six, seven, and eight are today. Proponents?
Doug Calner with Thompson, Greason, and Dorner, 10836 Old Mill Road. Here on behalf of the applicant, available to answer any questions if cabin.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Anyone in opposition? See none, public hearings closed.
Most closed.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
They're all passed seven to zero. Pursuit to City Council Rule 7E, Agenda Item Number Nine, shall be laid over two weeks for publication of public hearing. Pursuit to City Council Rule 7E, Agenda Items Number Ten through fourteen shall be laid over two weeks. Liquor, Item Number Fifteen, Thirteenth Street Brickhouse, 2202 South Thirteenth Street, Class C liquor license, new application, old location.
Public hearing on Item Number Fifteen is today.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Sean Kelly. Seventy-one thirty-four Pacific Street, appearing today on behalf of A&amp;S Inc., who the sole member is with me to my right, Barbara Crumb. This is a location that is formerly Curtin Clyde's on South Thirteenth Street. In July 2011, a new applicant took over and in her tenure as owner, she changed the name to Thirteenth Street Brickhouse and that's what it's known to today, known as today. Barb was the owner from ninety-two to 2011, and she's willing to take it back over as the current owner wants to get out. So she does have an application on file with the commission, and part of the restriction or condition of the prior license was that the landlord, who is statutorily ineligible to have a liquor license, be restricted from any access to the operation of liquor license. We are certainly okay with that, and we believe the liquor commission would require the same. So with that, we would offer that as a condition to the approval if the council is willing to do so. Additionally, we would just be happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Any other proponents that want to speak today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Gurnat.
Well, welcome back again, Barbara.
And you as well.
What can you tell the council where we could be assured that the old Curtin Clyde adage aura won't return to the Thirteenth Street Brickhouse? In addition to what your attorney has just said without, with that one restriction that was mentioned in his oration, what else can you tell us that we're, it's not going to revert back?
Well, we have taken extreme measures as far as security.
Name and address, please, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Barbara Crumb, forty, Nineteenth South, Thirtieth Street, Omaha. Again, we've taken security measures. We have security there every night of the week. We've not had any trouble for quite some time. We have a strict dress code that must be followed. I don't know what else. We have a metal detector if we need it, which we don't anymore, need anything that drastic.
Are you going to have live entertainment down there?
No.
Okay. Occasionally you have, let's see, piped in music, you have electronic music, is that correct?
Occasionally we have DJs. I mean, like karaoke.
Karaoke?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is that piped to the outdoors?
Yes.
Okay. Will that continue? If you...
I would, there are speakers outside is what it is.
Okay.
And they can be turned off at any given time.
Okay. All right. And that doesn't affect the indoor operation of it all, just the outside? If you didn't want to have that music piped outside, that could be turned off, is that correct?
Yes.
I'll be honest with you, I'm still somewhat hesitant. How can we be assured that the landowner is not going to take an active interest in the day-to-day operation of the bar? Is about the best I could put the question.
And if I may interject?
Please do.
Councilman. Barbara Crumb, the applicant, she's been in the bar business since 1979. So this is nothing new to her. She's operated at this location from ninety-two to 2011. In the interim, she was operating the South Omaha Bar at Twenty-Fourth and then that building was sold, and so now she's always had her bar in her life, and now she's going back to South Thirteenth Street. To my knowledge, she's had a good relationship with the Liquor Control Commission as far as suspensions go. I mean, that's a long run, over thirty years, to be a license, a licensee in the City of Omaha. We could assure you that the Liquor Commission also gives us heightened scrutiny due to the landlord-tenant relationship, and if, you know, he won't have any operation, we're willing to condition that, that he has nothing to do with the operation. If we have to ban him from the license premise, you know, that's something that we'll consider because he does, his interest is just having a tenant. He has no interest in the bar, he simply wants a tenant in there, and I think he would be willing to go by whatever conditions the council sees fit or the Liquor Commission.
Am I correct in saying that he does have an office downstairs on that property? Because he's the landowner.
That's right.
Understood. He has an office downstairs, and was there a requirement to where he had to have an exit out the back and he could not enter the bar from the inside, would have to go on the outside and go around and come back in? Is that accurate?
That is. We did that with, through the City of Omaha Attorney's Office to make sure out of an abundance of caution that he was not involved, and so we made that exit just for him in.
No further questions at this time. I'll yield the floor. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Mr. President, Barb, what occasions will you have the outside music?
Like in the front with the speakers or?
Right. Right.
It's just in every, it's just always there. It's the radio or the jukebox or whatever's on.
And you don't get complaints on that?
Well, it isn't like full blast. I mean, no, there's a beer garden out front, and that's the only reason the music is there.
Okay.
But it's, no, nobody's ever said anything.
No one's ever said anything. Okay.
That I know of.
Okay. If in the future we do get complaints on that, would you be willing to limit the outside, not at this time, but in the future, would you be willing to limit it to just special occasions so that it isn't an ongoing thing?
Absolutely.
Well, we'll wait and see how it goes. I'll go with you now, but we may end up having to readjust that. And you'd be willing to do that?
Not a problem.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Gurnat.
I would just ask my colleague, go ahead, vote your conscience on this. I'm still a little uncomfortable with it. I know Barb's got a fairly good, well, actually a good record with the Liquor Control Commission. There's just a gut feeling, I can't put into words right now, that is holding me up on this, but go ahead and vote your conscience on this. Thanks again, Mr. President.
Thank you. No further lights, is there a motion?
Most no.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Pass.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
And Jerem passed the second time for a potential conflict of interest. It is adopted, five, one, and one passing. Item number sixteen, Jocelyn Castle, thirty-nine oh-two Davenport Street, Class I liquor license, new application, new location. We have communications and supporting and one, pardon. Oh, did you want the condition on the motion? That it's going to be put on them by the state anyway, but... Before we go on to Jocelyn Castle, do we want a condition on that motion that they not be, that the owner not be involved in?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any objection to that being added to the approval?
No.
Okay. Okay, item sixteen, Jocelyn Castle, thirty-nine oh-two Davenport Street, Class I liquor license, new application, new location. We have communications supporting and one communication opposing.
Public hearing on Item Number Sixteen is today. Proponents, please.
Hi, my name is Julie Riley. I'm the new Executive Director at the Jocelyn Castle Trust at thirty-nine oh-two Davenport. I'm here today to request that you grant our application for the City Council. The license was applied for in an effort to comply with city and state regulations involving the use of alcohol. We intend to use the license for the programs that we already offer at the castle and have no plans to add any additional programs, what we're already doing. We're just hoping to be in compliance through this application for a license.
Thank you, Julie. Any other proponents? Anyone else in favor?
Good afternoon, Mr. President and City Council members. My name is Rob Casaro, and I live at 101 North Thirty-Ninth Street. I am a neighbor to the Jocelyn Castle and a paid and volunteer docent at the Jocelyn Castle. I believe supporting this effort to have the Jocelyn Castle come into compliance with their events encourages and supports the opportunities for the future cultural involvement and the impact that the castle has on not only our neighborhood but of the City of Omaha. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Marnie Casaro, 101 North Thirty-Ninth Street. I'm here to support the castle in their request for approval for the liquor license as a homeowner who lives just down the street from the castle and also as a paid and volunteer docent with the castle facility. My husband and I, not to speak for you, spend a great deal of hours every month either providing tours or attending events or acting as docents at all different types of events that are educational and cultural in nature, and we would like to see those continued and are definitely here to support the castle. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? See none, any opponents today? See none, public hearings closed. Mr. Jerem.
Yes, Julie, could you come back down, please? While she's making her way down, I would say that I have received the letters of support, and I believe they're in the record, from the Jocelyn Castle Neighborhood Association in support of this, the Midtown Neighborhood Alliance, which is fourteen neighborhoods in Midtown that is in support of this, as well as the Midtown Business Association, which is in support of this. But we do have a neighbor that has some concerns, and in looking at her concerns, I think it would be worth taking a few minutes to address them, to give a little perspective about the big overwhelming questions, why a license as opposed to this catering arrangement that had been going on in the past. Some of the returning council members will remember, recall, we've had other applicants who have been using caterers and special designated licenses that the Liquor Commission is discouraging, that they're encouraging the compliance in terms of these facilities to get their own licenses so that they can be better regulated and supervised by the state liquor commission. So that's primarily the motivating reason why we're seeing these sorts of applications. But with regard to her concerns, I think they fall into concerns about seeing turnover in management in terms of the management quality, and concerns that there may be that come about because of those things. Accountability, which I think we just saw as a reason for this, the commission wants more accountability is why they're pursuing a license, so that they're under that direct regulatory authority of the state as well as our liquor committee. Concerns about lack of security or the perception of lack of security, question about where exactly the license premises would be, whether it's just indoors to the building or outdoors on the grounds, and whether there'd be potential problems with people traversing the grounds or leaving the grounds with alcohol and how that'll be controlled, as well as the training of people who have anything to do with the license premises, which we receive in numerous license applications, as well as noise, intrusions into the neighborhood, so to speak, whether it be people trying to leave the premises with alcohol or public urination, intoxication, those sorts of things, which we receive routinely. Lighting and security in terms of larger events. So I think we've answered some of those on accountability. Training is the number one thing I want to go through with you, and that is to see if you will agree, like every other applicant that's ever come before us, that the liquor license manager, as well as the servers and your docents who will be supervising the activities in terms of helping assist with security, will all agree to take the state responsible server training course, which I believe is an online exercise. First, you have to say who you are again.
Julie Riley, I actually live at eleven fourteen South Thirty-third Street also. We have three managers on our license application, the chairman of our board, myself, and another employee. So we'll have three trained representatives of the castle that will have been through the training. And what we were planning to do is after we've been through training, we were planning to retrain all of our docents, and we've already started the process to prepare new materials for caterers and other guests that may be using our facility to understand what the castle's policies are in relation to alcohol use, and they will comply with what, everything we learn in training.
Okay. And then, so you're going to train the trainers and then have anyone that's serving go through the, of course. I'd encourage you to also have the servers go through that because it's an easy thing to do and they pick up on things that they might not ordinarily...
We do have one volunteer who's already trained that works with us pretty regularly.
With regard to the license premises, I wanted to take a minute to say, the application says it's for indoor only and to alert you to the fact that you will occasionally have smokers at events who are accustomed with other licensed premises that have outdoor licensed areas, they're used to carrying them out. So I want to know what you'll do to make sure that people aren't leaving the actual building with alcohol, whether it's to carry out for a cigarette break or to actually, it's a fairly large grounds to...
We already have that policy in place, and it's part of the work of the docents to keep people from leaving the building with any food or drink. So we would have a table by the front door so that anyone going out to smoke, I mean, we actually frown on smoking on the grounds too, so I think that's probably how we would handle that situation.
With regard into the concern about intrusion into the neighborhood, I think this gets to the larger question about security, and to the extent that you have events that have over a hundred people at them and then maybe a hundred fifty to two hundred, what representations can you have that you'll have supplemental security on grounds to make sure that the sorts of issues that I discussed before won't come up with the neighborhood in terms of noise, leaving the grounds with alcohol or disruption?
We have one person who's always hired for every event to patrol the exterior of the castle. There is really only one entrance and exit to the grounds, so that's fairly easy for the security person to keep an eye out on.
Would you agree that if you have over two hundred anticipated guests, you'll have two outdoor security?
It becomes a financial issue. I think most of the events that we have at the castle that are over two hundred are not our own events. They are wedding rentals, and those activities are covered by the liquor license of our sole caterer that provides alcohol for these weddings. And so we would pass that cost on to the renters for that event. And we, the castle rarely has more than seventy-five people at an event at one time because our music room can only accommodate seventy-five chairs, so...
So then there would be no issue with regard to, if you get an event that large, that you'll have an additional security that will be passed on to the...
Yeah.
In terms of lighting, there's some representation that you only have one exterior light that works. You may want to do a maintenance assessment. This person lives across the street and apparently has a pretty good view as to...
Actually, many of our lights are on motion detectors, so if you were watching from across the street, they would appear to not be working, but if you walked up to the building, they would go on. We have four sodium vapor lights, not the most attractive, but that cover all of the main parking areas of the castle. And we also have some smaller lighting around the perimeter that's mostly cosmetic and probably wouldn't deter any criminal activity. We have two proposals on hand right now to redo all the lighting on the site, but because the castle is a nonprofit, we don't have the funds at this time to redo the whole lighting system, so...
Okay. And I don't know if your Jocelyn Castle Trust is a member of the Neighborhood Association, but I encourage you, if you're not, to join and to at least occasionally attend so that you can find out and listen to the actual neighbors' concerns as to what might be arising. But I think that from what I've seen and read in the concerns, you've been very cooperative and willing to address them, so I would make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted, seven to zero. Item number seventeen is Benson Brewery at sixty-nine fifty, or sixty fifty-nine Maple Street, requests permission to appoint Christian Young, manager of their pending Class I and catering liquor licenses, and we have a request to allow withdrawal of this application.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's withdrawn, seven to zero. Item number eighteen is Walmart Supercenter, fifty-one forty-one, one hundred and sixty-nine sixty, West Maple Road, requests permission to appoint Douglas Haybush, manager of their present package liquor license.
Public hearing on Item Number Eighteen is today. Proponents, please.
Hey, good afternoon. My name's Douglas Haybush, and I live at twenty-thirty South Hundred and Ninety-Eighth Street, new store manager of the Walmart, one hundred and sixty-ninth and Maple, and look to appoint the new liquor license from the previous store manager to myself.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Move the floor. Second.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's approved, seven to zero. Item number nineteen is Perry's Place, ninety-six fifty-two Mockingbird Drive, requests permission for a special designated license for a concert on July twentieth from noon to two AM with music until one AM.
Public hearing on Item Number Nineteen is today. Proponents, please.
Ted Perry, ninety-six fifty-two, Mockingbird Drive, here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? See none, public hearings closed.
Motion approved. Yeah, motion approved. Second.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the City Council may cause an item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed, consent agenda shall be taken out by City Council merely following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by City Council Rules of Order.
The public hearings on Agenda Items Number Twenty through Twenty-Six were held on June eleventh, two thousand thirteen.
Second.
Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnat?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the item number you wish to address, identify yourself by name and address, and who you represent, and if you are a proponent or an opponent. See none. Oh, please. Yeah.
Mr. President, I'm Martin Manhart with Nebraska Air Filter, I'm item number 27 on your list.
Okay.
Thank you for hearing our case today. Just want to say thank you for looking at this, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to take them, otherwise, appreciate all your effort here.
Great, thank you. Any other proponents or opponents on these items? See none, public hearings closed. Roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
They're all adopted 7 to 0. Resolution, item number 33, resolution, the city council of Omaha does hereby delegate the responsibility for the negotiations of labor contracts to the mayor of the city of Omaha until such time as it revokes such delegation.
Public hearing on item number 33 is today. Any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Mr. Jerem?
Yes, this is an issue in terms of who should negotiate and why, that I just wanted to take a second to go through to remind people that although the city charter vests this authority with the city council, and we have occasionally exercised that authority, we've delegated it primarily to the chief executive of the city, the mayor, and Mayor Stothard had run on this issue, campaigned on it, and has requested this, and I think in the spirit of working with her, that this is a good opportunity to allow her the opportunity that she seeks. However, she's also asked us to maintain and keep inform intact a labor negotiations committee, so that there's a more close working relationship between the mayor's office on these issues and the council. And so, something that I thought, after a lot of consideration, that seemed reasonable, so it's my understanding that the council president has agreed to keep that intact, and will be serving as a part of the law committee under Chairman Pauls and Council Member Melton, so look forward to working with the mayor on this.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, just going on record to say that when we originally took back this negotiating power, I was always hesitant about it, because I feel that it should be in the mayor's office, and so my yes vote back at that time was temporary, it was a temporary thing, and so I had always intended to give it back to the mayor's office. And so, in my case, it has nothing to do with who actually won, it's just that I believe it's a better practice. We did our thing, and we did it well, but it's better government to go ahead and have one person negotiate as opposed to seven, so that's the reason why I'm supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. And I would add that I agree with those comments as well, and I think that negotiations are a function of the executive branch, but that the council did do a good job representing taxpayers when we had that authority and that lead in the negotiations, and I think there's unanimous support here today to start anew with a fresh round of negotiations, but stay in close contact and monitor them closely. So we have a motion and a second. No further lights, roll call.
Gray?
Yes.
Jerem?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Pauls?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Gurnett?
Yes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
It's adopted 7 to 0. Pursuant to city council rule 7F, agenda items number 34 through 35 shall be laid within four weeks for publication in public hearing. Pursuant to city council rule 7D, the public hearing agenda items numbers 36 through 38 shall be held on third reading, ordinance on second reading. Item number 39, ordinance to amend section 53-9 regarding the time limit on providing improvements, A, planning board and planning department recommend approval.
Public hearing on item number 39 is today. Any proponents? Any opponents? See none, public hearings closed.
Item number 40, ordinance declare necessity... Oh, Franklin?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Thompson?
Yes, if someone from planning could just give us the rationale for the change, just for the record.
James Thiel, City Planning Department, the rationale is to allow an additional year of time for the developer to put in the public improvements necessary under the subdivision agreement.
And what we had was unreasonable, is that correct? It was just too short of a time period.
Well, as well as we've seen in recent years, there's been some difficulty with moving projects forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Number 40, ordinance declare necessity of acquiring necessary private property at the purpose of constructing in Dahman Avenue F to H Streets.
Public hearing on item number 40 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed, Mr. Gurnett?
Public Works Department, this stretch of road has been known for a long time as being one of the flooding areas during an inclement weather event. Will what's being designed offer those property owners that abut this particular stretch of road, any formidable relief, or is this... Can you kind of give us a little gauge on where this is going to be?
Bob Stube, Public Works, this is a project that's in cooperation with the new business that's going in down there, so it's a shared improvements of Dahman Avenue, so we do know that there are issues down there with some of the lowland flooding. It is a low spot, just because of the railroad crossing that exists at that location, but it is something that we will take a look at as part of the design.
Just to clear up any rumor that may be out there, that railroad crossing, to your knowledge, will that stay or be removed? Do you have any idea?
I'm not sure, councilman, that I can answer that question for you today, but I can get that information for you.
Okay, if you would, I'd appreciate it.
Yes.
I understand that, if I read the document correctly, that there'll be additional inlets with this construction for stormwater?
Yeah, again, excuse me, again, this is an improvement to the roadway, but there'll also be, the storm sewers are part of the street pavement section, so that will also be looked at.
And we have several areas that send water towards this particular stretch of roadway, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
That is a low spot there, so it is a problem area for us.
Right. And the infrastructure underground, that's designed, as I understand it, for maybe a minimum of two inlets. If there's more, will that underground sewer be adequate enough, or is that going to be part of the design as we go through this project?
With the existing underground utilities, I don't believe that there's any plan to expand those beyond the scope of this particular project, so there's always a potential that you could add more inlets, but if the underground sewers don't have the capacity, it doesn't necessarily provide that additional benefit. We also have situations down there where you have some existing properties that are in that vicinity that also drain down into that section.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Stube.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Item 41, ordinance to approve the attached agreement with the Omaha Healthy Kids Alliance to support the cost of a healthy home construction specialist for three years.
Public hearing on item number 41 is today. Proponents?
Good afternoon, Clayton Evans, 5006 Underwood Avenue, I'm definitely a proponent, I'm here to represent Omaha Healthy Kids Alliance. I have some information about the position, and then if you all have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. We would only ask that you support the approval of this, because the position of the city is very important to us. We actually have the opportunity to host a training for city code inspectors, and they're currently employed by the city. This will be a three-year grant, and though we received the grant in 2011, this will start, it says July 1, and we'll carry it on through after the grant finishes for us. We believe that the inspector will help to kind of bridge the gap between enforcement and information, be a resource to homeowners, to inform them the actual how to go about the processes of getting their homes up to standard and code, and we hope that the inspector will be tasked with creating a standard operating procedure for code inspectors dealing with healthy homes issues, and the HUD housing standards that were released this year, you'll see there's a move towards healthy homes, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? CNN public hearings closed. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I wanted to take the opportunity, because it doesn't happen, a lot of times we on the council here try to, as much as we can, when we know about issues, and we know about work some people are doing, want to make sure that we give credit for that. And I wanted to give credit to you and others for Healthy Kids Alliance, having attended several of your meetings, and understanding the seriousness and the dedication that you all bring to this, I'm very appreciative of what you do, I'm very appreciative of what you do across the city. And I wish the other person who plans to run karaoke had been here, because if any of you all get the opportunity, that's the man right there. Had an opportunity to listen to him at one of my favorite places, and supreme talent, but more importantly, the attitude that you and the others bring to the Healthy Kids Alliance is deeply appreciated, and the work that you do should not go unnoticed, so thank you for what you do.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your support, and he's exaggerating about that.
Hopefully, Mr. Gray did not participate in our duet.
No, 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 no.
Mr. Gray's smart.
He's part of the good company, I got to enjoy him, and yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Ms. Melton?
Sorry, I'm still learning how to use the microphone, so I apologize.
I'm completely lost.
Could you just give me a little more detail, as somebody new on city council, could you just give me just a brief overview of what Omaha Healthy Kids Alliance does, and then what in particular this construction specialist will be doing?
Sure, we were founded in 2006, primarily as a lead poisoning prevention organization. We've partnered with the city, as well as many offices in the city, planning department, as well as other organizations in town. We educate and advocate for low to moderate income families for better housing here in Omaha. There was a transition into healthy home standards. Basically, our job is to connect the dots between the condition of people's homes and the condition of the family's health, and how, and tell families that aren't so well informed of those things, what they can do about those, finding solutions, especially low-cost solutions to fix those things. The position itself would just be someone, they would do work similar to what we do in our offices on our home visits, but they'd be working here at the city and trying to, like I said, maybe bring more of an informative attitude to a city code inspector visit. You know, I think there's a lot of fear on the part of homeowners when they have to speak to people from the city, I see that even when the city goes in to do great works in their homes, that I have to explain that they're there, that, you know, the city lead hazard control, and city rehab, the TAP program, that they're there to help, and I think that city code could be seen that way. I think that there's a way to go about some preventative measures, and like I said, informative way of doing this, and hopefully that's how we have this position written.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Jerem?
Is this the, is it Cressy or Cressig Grant?
Yes, sir.
So the family who started Kmart has grants that you applied for, you won the grant, and now you're proposing to take that fund, have a contract with the city, so that the city can support someone to help your organization achieve your overall goal. Is that more or less the summary?
Well, yes, I would hope it's more than just our goal, but yes.
And this is the mechanism for putting this position into place, rather than calling it a code enforcement person, you decided the best means to do it is how it's structured?
Yes, sir, this is, and I believe that the structure of it has changed a bit as it went through the approval process. So this was the shape that it took on with, you know, with the opinions of the partners of the city that would be in charge of making sure it's carried out, so.
So you have some assurances with the agreement that the benchmarks and the goals that are actually going to be achieved, and the person's going to be utilized for the dedicated purpose that you represented in the grant that you applied for?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Is that your understanding, Mr. Thiel?
That's correct, James Thiel, City Planning, yes, that's correct, we're very excited about the opportunity this offers.
Right, and I just wanted to share that for a moment, because it did not get a lot of publicity, the spectacular work you did in getting the grant, to obtain that support from such a major national foundation, to believe that that can work here, and then to partner with the city to help achieve that purpose as a community goal, to further your organizational goals, to me, I think is something worth support.
Well, thank you very much, and I have to say in her absence that Cara Henner Eastman, our CEO, anything good that our organization has produced is probably rooted in her efforts, so, but thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
Thank you. Just a logistic question here, the specialist, how is he or she engaged? Is it a complaint-driven thing, or is it a normal, they're on a normal rotation of checking out homes? Just what engages the specialist?
Yes, sir. My understanding is that the inspector, this particular position, the specialist, will receive referrals when code inspectors on the regular rotation, spot issues in the homes that they visit, and then he would go out and help guide the owner through taking whatever steps it may take to fix those things, so it would be referrals within their office.
The city refers?
Yes.
The person, okay.
Yes.
All right, I just needed to get an idea of the day-to-day workings of it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Gray?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just very quickly, Councilmember Melton, if you and Councilmember Pauls, if you get the opportunity, don't let his soft voice fool you, and I'm not talking about the karaoke piece of that, I'm talking about the houses and so forth that they visit. I think you'd be, in some cases, surprised and disappointed in the condition that they're in, but you would also be surprised and elated at the level of commitment they have to, with some simple, sometimes cost-effective solutions to help bring that home back up and restore that home, to a certain extent, to where it's livable and where folks can live in, and I would encourage you to at least visit with them, talk to them, and maybe check out one or two of the homes that they're working on. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Notless, Dad, that we'll work hard to get your sidewalks report here momentarily in the middle of a Dundee Business District project. Let's come right through your front door, but it'll be on its way shortly, so thank you for your patience.
We appreciate the work, we've been enjoying the hoopla, so.
Great, great. Thank you. Next item.
Item number 42, ordinance to approve and authorize the distribution of the state homeland security grant to fund tri-county region strategic projects that will provide first responders and emergency response communities in Douglas, Sarpy, Washington Counties with enhanced capabilities for responding to potential threats of man-made or natural disasters.
Public hearing on item number 42 is today. Any proponents? Any opponents? See none, public hearings closed. Next item.
Item number 43, ordinance to approve the amendment to the cable television franchise agreement between the city and Cox Communication.
agreement between the city and Cox Communications to update the list of dedicated fiber return lines Cox must maintain for public educational and governmental programs to include new PEG facilities and eliminate unused lines.
Public hearing on item number 43 is today. Any proponents? Seeing none. Any opponents? Seeing none. Public hearings closed.
Item number 44, ordinance to repeal section 19425, providing for the disposition of funds for interconnect fees paid to the city by the cable television franchise holders.
Public hearing on item number 44 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Next item.
Item 45, ordinance to amend the whole code sections 19432, 434, and 436, controlling the Cable Television Access Corporation, to create staggered terms for members of the corporation governing body. And we have an amendment of the whole.
Public hearing on item number 45 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents?
Good afternoon, city council members. And Councilmember Gray, good to see you. Family was worried about you. My name is Chris Pierce. I live at 12912 Curtis Avenue. I am president and executive producer of Viewpoint Television. I didn't really have a problem. I found out last night at a CTEC meeting that I didn't even know it was Councilman Gray, but the amendment. I have a little problem with, the original ordinance states that one member should be actively engaged as a producer of public education programming for the cable television system. Unfortunately, I don't think any member of the CTEC board qualifies in that currently, and I think that's an opportunity missed. I'm sure you all have followed. I know that your staff has followed the transition between Cox administering your public access program to where now the city does it. To put it easily, it ain't been easy. It's been a lot of ups and downs. As a producer, it's caused a lot of ups and downs on how we can produce quality shows for that cable access programming. And I think perhaps one of the missing tokens was someone that is, what I said, does the grunt work, produces programming, finds guests, subject matter, all those kinds of things, deals with the equipment. I think that was missed, and that opportunity missed has caused, in my opinion, some problems down the road. So, I don't, you know, to the amendment from Councilman Gray, I have no problem with reducing the members from nine to seven. I think that makes sense. I'm about smaller, because then you can get better consensus, and too many cooks in the kitchen spoils the dinner. But I do believe that the ordinance originally, which requires one member to be an active producer in public access, should be on the board. I think it's invaluable. Again, it's the city council who decides who that person is, of course, so, you know, being able to find a good applicant, I don't think would be a problem. But if we take that out, I think that's an opportunity missed. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Any other opponents today? Seeing none. Public hearings closed. Mr. Gray.
Mr. Mumgarth.
Tom Mumgarth, Deputy City Attorney.
At pre-council this morning, you gave an excellent layman's version of what number 45 would be. Would you be kind enough to repeat that capsulated event this morning, this afternoon?
Well, in particular, I'll speak to the idea, the question of whether a producer, it's valuable to have the producer on the board. There currently is a active producer on the board. It's Dr. Francis Mendenhall, who's been producing programs for quite a long time. When this was originally written, the idea was, just as was stated here, that a producer can bring a valuable insight to the board, can provide the board with some insight into the problems producers have and solutions that producers have. That, of course, is balanced by the idea that, well, if a producer's on the board, then the producer may be promoting their program and the interests of their program above others. There's an inherent conflict of interest that might arise. We've seen about eight months' worth of the board now, and I might make, draw on any conclusions as to whether that, which one's the most valid. I think there may be some truth in both sides of that. So, having a producer on the board certainly has some benefits, but it can also have some negatives. We've also seen that we originally drew this so that all the board members, well, that the initial board would only have one-year term, and that was for the purpose of sorting things out, figuring out how we were supposed to, you know, what was the best practice. But then we also had the board turning over completely every three years. And this would change that to give staggered terms, so that you would have some experience that would continue on, you'd have more continuity on the board. The rest of the changes that are made in item number 45, frankly, are just issues that have come up, mechanics, practicalities, errors that we think we've made when we drew the original ordinance, and that just will make the things, the process move smoother.
So, in fact, the system recognized some errors, and number 45 is going to correct that as far as the wordage is concerned, and the way that the ordinance is to be amended through the various sections of 19432 through 436 would be, for the lack of a better term, some housekeeping issues, errors that have been noted through the past eight months. Would that be sort of accurate to say?
Yeah, most of it is, just that. Of course, the issue about who should be on the board, how many board members you should have, whether they should have staggered terms, there's pros and cons both ways. We currently have, we went originally with the idea that the board would be representative of each council district, and so you would have seven board members plus two at-large to represent the entire city. Well, through the time, I guess the philosophy is being presented now that perhaps it's more important to have the expertise and interest of board members rather than representation of different council districts. So, changing it from having district representatives to just have people who are active in the industry or experienced in the industry, that's kind of the goal that is shifting with the amendment to the amendment. Again, there's pros and cons both ways, whether you want to have it representative or more based upon experience and the ability to move the corporation forward.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Pierce, I saw you like you were a jack-in-the-box coming out. Did you want to respond?
Chris Pierce, 12912 Curtis Avenue. I didn't know Francis Mendenhall was an active member of public access. I can see some concerns. But again, it's about quality. I like the thought process that Mr. Mumgarth said. It's about quality people rather than representation. But I do notice that the other change is that they must live within the city, and I'm assuming the city limits. So, for me, I live 200 yards out, or, yeah, 20 yards out. I wouldn't qualify for that, although in the original, I could have at one of the at-larges. So, I don't think we'd want to restrict ourselves by where someone lives, but yet is still serviced by the city, serviced by one of the providers, you know, all the other things are met, but just happen to live outside the city limits, which the original ordinance took care that allowed for two of the members to not necessarily live in the city, but still meet all the other requirements. With the producer, I think it's about looking at who that person is and the qualities they can bring. And I think that's going to have to be in the process that the council put together as far as nominating people for these positions, is looking at who that person is and what they can bring to the board. I can see that if you get the wrong person, the wrong kind of person, or a person that may want to promote their own project, their own show, well, that's not the right person for the board. But having that applicable knowledge and experience and day-to-day process is important for the board, because if you don't have anyone on the board that understands that, then you don't have any knowledge when these decisions are being made to buy equipment or to choose this site or another. I mean, there's been a myriad of difficulties that the board's had to come over because of their inexperience. It has lengthened. I know, we were talking last night, that the original cost for the new studio, we thought was $150,000. We all know that that was nowhere to be true, but I think if we had a good person that understood that background, understood that process, could have said, hold on, wait a minute, that's not going to happen. We need to rethink what we're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver, you want to say something about this particular amendment?
Just, Warren Weaver, council staff, just a clarification. As this process has matured, we have learned an awful lot. As to the reason that it says that a person must be of the city, this PEG channel that we're talking about, this public access channel, is shown only within Douglas County, that the other communities like Bellevue and other communities in Sarpy County have their own. And that is the reason that we inserted into the language that this PEG channel that works on this stuff within this county would be best if it were a member of the city. Because that's the footprint of where this is being shown. The footprint is not being shown in Council Blough's Bellevue, Le Vist, or Papillion. I think that was the reason we added that. And then finally, I think Mr. Gray is proposing that when the council members propose various candidates for consideration, that goes to a committee of the city council, and that committee would be responsible for ensuring that there's some kind of representation, there's some kind of balance between experience levels, whether that's a legal background or an accounting background or whatever. And we would expect the committee to balance those requirements geographically, experience-wise, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, let me say, you know, a couple of things about the amendment that I have. First of all, it's important, I think, for you to be, among the amendments is, number one, to be a Cox or CenturyLink subscriber. It would be kind of useless to have someone on the board who doesn't have any access to Cox or CenturyLink, does not watch, does not participate. And so, I would think that we, as a council, would want to have that person be a subscriber. Secondly, I think it was articulated by Mr. Weaver quite well about why we chose who lives in the city limits. Now, the other side of that is, for those under the old rules, I don't know why, you know, I couldn't adjust this to where we grandfather some people in, but still continue to make this the rule after that, because it's important that, as Mr. Weaver pointed out, the subscribers to these two only live in Douglas County. So, it should be, you know, the city of Omaha that, you know, they should live within the city of Omaha. My issue was, they cannot be an active program, they cannot have an active program on the schedule. We had, we did have originally on our board a gentleman who was a producer. And not only was he a producer, but he ran the station and ran a network. And there was a lot of concern and consternation for him being there. So, I, you know, I asked him, you know, if he would step down and continue to be a consultant to the board, which he has done, and I'm very grateful for him for doing that. But I don't think producers ought to be on the board, per se, because they have a vested interest, and as Mr. Mumgarth pointed out, there could be an issue of a conflict of interest. The way I'd understood, the way I was going, wanted it written, was that you would still get a representative from each of the council districts, but they would then go to the law committee. I think each council district would recommend at least three individuals, and those three individuals would go to the law committee, and the law committee would pick the seven and bring them before the city council. That was my intent, anyway. It's not articulated, it's clearly here, but that was the intent that I had with the resolution. And the other thing I'll say is, we have to keep in mind that we're not innocent bystanders anymore watching how Cox Cable works. We are now the owners of this PEG programming, and we have got to be successful at it. And the only way to be successful at it is to change what you call the branding and have something that's similar like, and I'm not, don't want to steal this from National Public Radio or public radio, but, you know, like, what they say is, all views are heard, all opinions are respected, something like that, so that we're all-inclusive, and this is an entire city effort, and everybody has the opportunity and the right to participate and learn how to be a producer if they want to. Those skills are going to be taught. They're going to be available for any of those who want to. And so, I think this amendment is important, and I do, Mr. Pierce, take your argument into consideration, and perhaps maybe a grandfather-type thing for you and maybe one or two others that may live outside the city as we move forward. But from here on forward, I think we should, the individuals should come from the city of Omaha. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I saw Mr. Miller creep up front. Was that a signal that, do you have something you want to say, sir?
Yes, Dean Miller, city council staff. I was just going to add, since I've been working on this and had various conversations, a couple of big reasons for not being an active producer is, one is, it's very hard to determine what an active producer is. I think you've heard today the level of what it takes to put a show together, whether you're doing the script, you're behind the camera, you're doing the sound, you're doing the audio, you're doing all the editing, or are you going to a computer and hitting a button and handing over a DVD? Which one of those classifies as a producer? So, it was very hard for us to determine what an active producer was, so we thought if you had an active program, maybe you shouldn't be on it. The second reason was the monetary, is there are some producers out there making money, putting shows together, putting them on the air. We envision that the channel may have a lot of value in the future, and producers could make a lot of money in the future. So, if you're making money, you might have a really big conflict of interest in terms of the schedule, how long the shows are, and when the shows air. So, those were a couple, I was just going to add to Councilman Gray, that we had discussions with, of why we added that.
And if I could have Mr. Mumgarth come back up.
Tom Mumgarth, Deputy City Attorney.
Just for point of clarification, each council person will nominate three. Is that correct?
Well, as it's written, the Gray amendment would have each council member nominate at least one.
At least one, so it'll give you one, two, or three.
Whatever number you choose.
Okay.
And they only have to be a resident of the city, but each council member could decide that they're only going to nominate people who live in their district. That's up to the council member.
And likewise, that person can nominate people that are not in the district?
Absolutely.
Okay, so it really is truly an at-large selection?
It leaves it up to each individual council member to decide if they want to do it representative or at-large.
Okay, all right. That will cause a little bit of consternation with certain people, but I'm willing to think about it. And then Councilman Gray, I'm willing to support the grandfather clause and/or some kind of three-mile zone, you know, because we have three-mile zones that don't necessarily encroach into Bellevue, but yet that might be a consideration, too. I just want to make sure that we've looked at everything that we can to look at the producer side. And I've had some conversations with council staff, and they'll take the side of the strategic, how-do-you-put-it-together side, and then I'll take the side of the producer side. And so, if we could just make sure we're looking at both sides, then I would feel good about our final vote.
Let me toss out the pros and cons about where somebody lives. Originally, when this was drafted, we thought, okay, if you take, since this is a PEG channel that is seen by people who have Cox or CenturyLink TV, Cox in particular, some of those people live inside the city, and some of those people live in Douglas County outside the city. And if they have the television system, the cable system, and they're able to watch these programs, maybe they'll have an interest in participating in the PEG governance. Well, that might be true, but then, on the other hand, this corporation board is spending city money. The money comes from the cable companies to the city, and then the city lets the corporation spend it. And the city is accountable for what's on that program, on those programs. And it is a contract that the city has with the cable company. So, those things might balance out that, sure, you might live outside the city and have an interest in watching these programs, but you don't have the same interest and accountability as a resident of the city may have because of those other factors. And so, you know, it's a toss-up. Do you want to...
it's a toss-up. Do you want to let people who watch the programs participate, or do you want to restrict that to people who have the interest in the city and the city's contracts and the city's money?
I appreciate that explanation. And then, Chris, just real quick.
Chris Pierce, one-two-nine-one-two, Curtis Avenue.
First of all, I want to say that I think your program is top-notch.
Thank you very much.
I wish there were more programs like yours.
I appreciate that.
And second of all, we did have that top-notch person from the Knowledge Network, and because of some issues that we previously talked about, they decided to step down. So, we actually started down that road, but as we were going down the road, all kinds of trap doors started opening up. So, go ahead.
And that's, you know, excellent points, and I see that. But even before I even knew about this ordinance or the amendment, I was trying to think always, I know one of the challenges the board has had is producers who feel that they're not being listened to, that they're not being paid attention to, and that has caused a lot of consternation within the board and trying to make everyone happy, but yet still deliver its mandate.
Uh-huh.
So, I was, in my mind, before all this, was thinking, how can we solve some of that if they feel they've got a voice on the board?
Could you agree to an advisory board of two or three of those kind of people, but they don't have a vote?
And that was something that I was, you know, before this, I was going to suggest to staff and to the board was, if there's any way to get the producers involved to where there's buy-in. It's not just, "I'm producing shows," as many of the members know here, when I get involved, I'm very involved. I've been involved with the CTEC board. I've been, you know, trying to do the best I can to help out, and I think that gives me buy-in. That means I want quality in how the board relates the equipment that they're buying in the studio, but then also it's important that I provide the content that I do because I have buy-in. And if you give buy-in to the producers, I think you get a better quality in production quality and content for the channel that we're, like Councilman Gray said, we're trying to create a brand for.
Okay. Well, Ben, you know, we have one advisor, but maybe we need three or four advisors without a vote, but then they can have a lot of input, I think. Maybe that's a good compromise to look at.
Councilmember Thompson, I'm willing to look at the idea of grandfathering. I'm not sure, I'm interested in the idea of the three-mile limit, only because we haven't annexed those areas yet, and as Mr. Mungard talked about earlier, you know, the citizens of Omaha are primarily responsible. So, I think, you know, the city of Omaha ought to, I mean, I think it ought to be confined to the city of Omaha, but I'm supportive of grandfathering, but I don't know that I'm supportive of going to the three-mile limit, but I'm willing to talk to you about it.
And what do you feel, just for the record, initially, what's your feelings about having, because Chris cannot be on the board for two reasons. He doesn't live in the city, and he has a program.
Yes.
But how about expanding our advisory board a little bit to where it includes more than just one person from the Knowledge Network?
It's actually not an advisory board. I mean, if that's what you want to do, I would be, I would consider, I would want to consider that, but it's not an advisory. We just asked him to remain, we just asked Jim to stay, and he agreed to stay on as a consultant. So, he's more of a consultant as opposed to an advisory person.
And I'm hearing Mr. Pierce say the buy-in part. I just really, I can understand what he's saying there, and if we can find a way to make him feel that his voice is being heard, may not have a vote, but his voice is being heard, then I think some of the problems on the producer's side can be, you know, remediated.
Let's, I mean, I think that's a thing we can talk through. You know, I don't know if we're going to solve it today, but I think it's a thing we can talk through. But I just wanted you to know, I'm totally amenable to grandfathering him and others in who may have programming, who may not live in the city simply because of the way things were done. But in the future, I wanted to confine this to people in the city because it is the city's product.
Without belaboring the point, I still need a clarification. So, if we did grandfather someone like him, he still has a program. So, can he be on the board?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Weaver, you have a comment you'd like to share?
Just a real quick clarification, so there's no misunderstanding. Anybody in the footprint of CenturyLink and Cox Cable is defined as a local producer, and so they can produce programs, they can continue to produce programs. We encourage them. It's just the reason not on the board is, like Mr. Mungard said, you're talking about city-funded monies, and again, I just emphasize, those people in Sarpy County don't see our Channel 22. My point is that, just like you should have a TV if you're going to be on the cable TV board, you should be able to know what's on the channel, because you're not going to be, if you live in Sarpy County, being on the board, it just doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to us. But that was the consideration. I just wanted to, but they can produce DVDs.
Thank you. Mr. Jerome.
Yes, and not to be the gloomy Gus here, rain on anyone's parade, but I don't see the need for either of these accommodations, because CTEC meetings are open to the public. So, when I hear that people want to make sure they have an opportunity to be heard and to be participating in the process, it's no different than the seven of us who come here on Tuesdays with public members who come before us on agenda items and weigh in. And no one would be denied that opportunity if we take the amendment as a whole, as drafted, and approve it. And, you know, I appreciate the people having an interest in this, and we've learned from the trap doors that having producers on the board is problematic. So, why do we want to now create an advisory council to create another layer that we already know has trap doors? And likewise, why do we need to grandfather to continue the perception that we're continuing the problems that we're trying to address clean up through experience? So, as I see it, it's time to give CTEC, you know, the wings it needs to fly, improving upon and learning from the mistakes, the errors that we've learned the last eight months, and to perhaps finally free the incredible strain on staff resources that are being consumed in our staff.
That's true.
So, to me, I appreciate the good intentions of colleagues here, but as I see it, I have a totally different approach than the two of you. It's time to let this CTEC fly. We've learned from the mistakes, and let's move it, and everyone's going to have a chance to be heard. The meetings are public, the agendas are open, so let's...
Thank you. See no further lights. Next item.
Item number forty-six, ordinance to amend section forty-three sixty-seven by deleting the reference to state statutes fourteen eight thirteen and add section twenty-five dash nineteen oh one through nineteen oh six, which sets forth the proper procedure for appeal from the billing board review to district court.
Public hearing on item number forty-six is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearings closed.
Pursuant to City Council Rule seven D, the public hearing agenda item number forty-seven through forty-nine shall be held on third reading. Pursuant to City Council Rule seven, see, the public hearing on agenda items number fifty-two fifty-four shall be held on the second reading.
Second. Roll call.
Gray.
Yes.
Jerome.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Pauls.
Yes.
Thompson.
Yes.
Gertan.
Yes.
Mr. President.
Yes. Thank you.
Eighteen AM.